I'd like to call this September the first meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Norman will not be with us this evening. He is discharged this morning from the hospital and he's been undergoing some tests. And I'm sure that Ms. Marvin and Juanita both would appreciate your prayers. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Johnson to open with the invocation.
Let's pray, please. Heavenly Father, so many times at this point in the meeting, we come to you and we ask you for things, but tonight, we'll just pause to say thanks. Father, I'd like to thank you for my board members who made great sacrifice to serve others. I pray you'd bless them in that endeavor. And I thank you for our staff, Father, which faithfully serves this board and folks in this county. And we pray these difficult times that you'd give them wisdom and good judgment, and you'd bless their efforts. We thank you for those folks who demonstrated interest to be here tonight, that they'll listen attentively, and we'll listen to them. We'll, Father, look upon their concerns as you would. And we pray for the wisdom of Christ, our Savior, and we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mason, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, only one adjustment. I would like to add under closed session, in addition to economic development, a property acquisition. Property acquisition, that is GS 143-318-11A5, property acquisition.
Mr. Chairman, whenever it's in order, I'd like to ask that we also go into closed session to discuss a legal matter with our attorney.
Can somebody come up with the number?
No, sir, I don't know. I'm sorry.
GS 143-318-11A6.
Maybe Mr. Pope.
The statute required to meet with an attorney.
We'll find out in a minute.
three, paragraph three.
318, paragraph three?
Yes, yes, sir.
No dash number? Okay. 11A3.
So that's all the adjustments I have.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, is motion, does the agenda stand as written?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we have some special recognitions. And I'd like for Jeff Fraser to come forward along with Dale Gooden.
It's hard to believe Dale's been with us for 25 years, because I started out with him from the get-go. And time flies. We've seen each other through good times, bad times. We've all become like a family. And I'm gonna miss seeing him every day, and I'm sure everyone else will, too. He's done so much for the county, and his work shows in so many county buildings. He's made the decision to leave, and on behalf of Iredell County and Facility Service, it's my honor to present the plaque, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you. I've probably known Dale longer than I have anybody in this room. We went to school together. He was a couple of years younger than I was, but I know in my dealings with Iredell County and Facility Services, the whole group has... are committed to doing the very, very best for Iredell County. And the work these people do, especially Dale... I had a wife that worked here for 42 years, and she could always tell me how good a job the facilities people did. And so, on behalf of the Commissioners and Iredell County Dale, we appreciate what you've done for us and wish you a real good, long retirement. Thank God. This time, I'd like to recognize Sarah Barnett and Chris Roll.
I was gonna give you a little bit of information about Sarah. She's been with Animal Control for about 16 years. Two of it was in Wilkes County. 14 is with Iredell County Animal Services and Control. She started out as an animal control officer, moved up to field supervisor. She has spent a lot of hours with Animal Control. She's been very dedicated. We're really gonna miss her. Sarah, I hope you have a happy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Sarah has one of those jobs which is thankless. You don't know it's there until you need it. I'm sorry she's gonna miss getting to go into the new facilities, but I'm sure she'll have better things to do, and she probably won't even think about us at those times. But anyway, we wish you, the Board of Commissioners, we wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you.
I'd declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. First issue will be Mr. Mike Brotherden.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but that's not part of the public hearing.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line here. Mary Blanks Kennedy requests rezoned 0.94 acres on Eagle Mills Road from residential agriculture to neighborhood business district.
We're on number three. Actually, Mr. Chairman, we're under appointments for the board.
That's when I had to get up and walk around. Now I got all messed up.
You're fine.
Okay, back at it. Presentation, special recognitions award, okay. Points for the board. Mr. Mike Brother desires to discuss and express opposition to the proposed use of special assessment improvements district under consideration for the town in Mooresville to pay for construction of a bridge across Interstate 77 at Oaks Road. Now we're right, now we're back on schedule.
Gentlemen, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here before you and to hear this tonight. But I'm a farmer down on Bluefield Road in Big Indian Loop, and we farm about 140 acres there and lease about 130 additional to it in raising cattle. And we'd heard talk about a bridge project, and we got a notice June, July the 15th about a meeting to discuss the Oaks Road overpass connector public workshop notice to be held August the 6th. So, again, we never thought much about it till to the meeting and what came out of the meeting. And what I'd like to cover tonight is excerpts from the workshop presentations, how the town in Mooresville plans to pay for this project, the Oaks Road Midnight Lane project plan, and traffic feasibility study, a map showing the boundaries of the property owners that received the invitation to the workshop and could be assessed, and then a second map of the Iredell County Town of Mooresville property shaded, and the county properties unshaded. And the last part of it is the special assessment legislation from the General Assembly that was, I call it tweaked, a year ago in August. And in the last session, a couple of weeks ago, they put some finishing touches on the legislation. And when the town started their presentation, they said this is the first time this has been applied in the state of North Carolina. So here, getting into the presentation, as legislation allows local jurisdictions to issue revenue bonds to finance projects' assessment revenue, it's pledged as security for the revenue bonds. Requires a petition of the majority of the owners of real property to be assessed, representing at least 66% of the assessed value of all real property in the district. How much would property owners pay? As the assessment must relate to the benefit of property, there are many ways to determine this. Some of the ways was by acre, by parcel, or by road frontage. The bridge project, which they had a study of the bridge project and a traffic analysis, and the cost of the bridge and the road improvements was $12 million. And with 8% on the bond package, either 20 or 30 years, was gonna be a total of $18,600,000. So they... Some of the preliminary costs that they ran was 220 acres plus, came out to an assessment value of $4,100 per acre, per year, per individual. May the Board of Commissioners impose this upon you. Basically, no, unless you're within the boundaries of a district your neighbors have petitioned. Revenue bond assessments can be paid in up to 30 annual installments with interest, typically expected to be around 20 installments. What if unable to pay? Assessment liens may be foreclosed in the same manner as property tax liens. Sales may begin within 30 days after due date. What if unable to pay? If one installment is unpaid, all remaining installments immediately become due and payable unless the board waives this. So if, assuming you paid your first year and you couldn't pay your second year, within 30 days, the remaining 19 installments become due at that time, is the assessment a lien? Yes. The lien is inferior to all prior and subsequent state, local, and federal taxes, but superior to any and all other liens. Now, this would greatly handicap me as a farmer on borrowing money. Just to borrow money nowadays is tight to get it, and with a lien on my property, boy, it would really be tough. The 132 acres I rent is adjacent to me that used to be our family property, and a retirement facility has purchased it with plans to build a retirement center with an investment of $150 to $200 million. And I have a lease contract with them, and part of that is to keep them informed of the activities that go on with the property. And when I informed them, and we sent them, between Henry here and myself, the presentation and what was pending, they were very upset about it, that they could not go on with a development with a lien on their property. Because the way that they finance their projects is through bonds, and this would just totally handicap them. So there's a lot of repercussions about having a lien on your property. And next is a map showing a highlighted area of the assessed zone. So, and you can see the distance, looking at the bottom of the page, too, is Highway 150. And I highlighted in green, excuse me, is our farm. And the assessed area runs all the way to the Caneus Road, then north up towards 21, right before it reaches 21, cuts back, and then crosses over 21 almost right to Reinhardt Road, and then zigzags back. So, you know, this is a little power that's been vested with a few people that can add or delete who's in the assessed zone or take away from the assessed zone to determine the use value that your property contributes to the use zone. And I'd like to turn it over to Henry here. I grew up farming with his family, and he lives over on the other side of the interstate on 21.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioners, a couple of things I'd like to highlight from what Mike presented. Now, we're going through this handout. I would like to highlight a couple of areas where we have some concerns or issues. First of all, it has to do with the 50% of a... or a majority, and 66% of the tax value. Now, an example where this could be a real problem, let's say five commercial property owners wanted to build this bridge for $12 million. Five farm or residential owners did not want to build it. They had more property, but less value. For example, one of the properties in the commercial area of Oaks Road has a two-acre, 2.3-acre plot that's worth $1.04 million tax value. My property, 7.7 acres, is worth $228,000. So, in a situation like that, where I may have more land, or even all the properties that do not want the property to be... the project to be done, could be outweighed by the values that are being applied here. Now, I understand that this legislation would be very beneficial for a situation where infrastructure needed to be put into a residential zone or a commercial zone, where those... all of those property owners would want those infrastructure features such as sidewalks and paved roads and sewer and water. But in a case like this, we have... those that do not have a choice would be brought into the situation and forced to be... to pay for... to potentially pay for this project with which they had no desire for to start with. Now, another issue has to do with the way that the benefits are assessed. This new legislation allows for the municipality board to assess the benefits in a non-traditional way, which means that there are other assessment processes already in place, and there are basic statutes that they must conform to in order to make those assessments. But this new law allows for that assessment to be made at the discretion of the board, pretty much. And that's a concern for us. Other issues are related to the amount of money that may be caused to be assessed to property owners that probably can't afford it. There's... you're talking about residential areas there where there are older folks, single moms, and things of that nature that have... they're in that situation because, you know, whatever that situation might be, but it also affects their income as well. So it has a feeling that the town could take advantage of this situation, the board could take advantage of this situation, and create a lot of problems for a lot of folks in the neighborhood. Now, as you look at this drawing, now, this drawing was arbitrarily drawn by a member of the planning board. Now, the legislation also allows for the town to zigzag around properties and so on and so forth. So it has a feel of an oppression of a sort in that I have no control in my situation of whether this project is gonna be done or not, and no control over the possibility of being assessed. Even though I'm in the county, I'm not sure what the annexation rules and regulations are, but I fear, and so do many of our neighbors, fear that we could be assessed... well, we could be annexed and then assessed with this debt or lien against our properties. Now, on the next page, I wanted to point out, I thought the board might be interested to see this. Now, you can't see the lines, and I apologize for the copies that came out a little bit dark or light or whichever, but there's a shaded area, and you can see the shaded areas. That indicates the Mooresville property zones. Now, the non-shaded areas are the county. And you can see inside the drawing, you can compare the two drawings, this drawing with the yellow highlights, to the drawings behind it. And you can tell that there are some shaded and unshaded areas there. But it turns out to be about half of the area inside that yellow box is county property, and about half of it is Mooresville. So I wanted to point that out as a note of interest. Now, as we move further through the packet, there's some concerns related to the project itself. There's been an assessment done on the traffic assessment, and each of the intersections related to this area have been given a rating from A to F. A being less than 10-second wait time, and an F with a greater than 80-second wait time. Now, on the next page, it shows the rating that was given to those intersections. First is an existing situation, which shows varied from D, C, and E. Now, in the comprehensive transportation plan in Mooresville, they consider a D as an acceptable grade level for an intersection. So that... take that into consideration as you look at this. Now, as you look forward in 2012, when this bridge is anticipated to be built, if they don't build it, you notice a variety of these intersections become grade F. And then, if they do the changes to the right-ofways and build the roads and not the bridge, they're an F. And also, if they build the bridge with all the road construction, it's still an F. And I contend that $12 million, or $18 million, as it were, should have a greater impact on that benefit, those intersections. Now, one of the things that was advertised when they sent that letter out, that this was for three purposes. One was to create a connection between 21 and Bluefield Road that Mike lives on. Secondly, it would relieve some of the congestion around the North Carolina 150 and I-77 interchange. And thirdly, it would create less risk situations on 150 and Interstate 77 interchange. Without access to 77, you still have to get on 150 if you're going for dining, or retail shopping, or to access 77. And according to their... to the study, it's not gonna improve the interchanges... intersections are in and around the area. Another point I wanted to make, and I'm sorry, I'm probably taking a little more time than I should. If you travel around the Mooresville area, there are several commercial properties standing idle. And the town of Mooresville, in this case, seems to be pushing a little more for additional new commercial development. In my opinion, I'd like to see a little more emphasis put on some of these idle stations or idle commercial properties. Want to point out, too, that I provided... we provided in the packet some additional information, and these are the general statutes that we're talking about that were implemented, voted on last August at the House level, and also, again, this August by the Senate, and voted into law on the 26th of August this year. So our point here, I want to come to this... we wanted to come to you guys and talk to you about our issues, and also get your opinion on what this legislation could potentially do to us as county residents, and also ask for any recommendations or actions, assistance on your part toward an equitable resolution to these issues in the county and with Mooresville as well. I want to thank you for your time and appreciate all that you are doing for the county, and look forward to working with you.
And one other thing I'd like to add is, you know, you are our government. You know, we've... Henry and I voted for you and the other 50% of the people there, and we think this is pretty heavy-handed tactics by Mooresville to imply such a burden on us that we didn't have a dog in the show, so to speak. We didn't get to vote for the guys, or can we vote them out of office, or do virtually nothing about it. So that's why we're here appealing to you guys for some type of relief in what's being proposed.
Okay, thank you. Would any of the Commissioners like to respond?
I'll direct this question, Mr. Pope. Mr. Pope, under Section 2A of the general statute, 168, 239.2, it reads as rewritten in this packet they gave me. The council of the city may make special assessments as provided in this article against benefited property within the city for the purpose of financing the capital cost of projects, et cetera. Within the city, does that protect these gentlemen, or can the city act in a proactive manner to annex them, to get them into the city, and then assess them?
It's clear to me that the city doesn't have the authority to impose special assessments outside the corporate boundaries of the city.
Right.
What authority they would have to annex these people, I don't know. As long as they're outside the city limits, I don't think the city has any authority to assess them.
Experience has taught me that municipalities under North Carolina statutes have a great deal of authority to annex people almost at will. I don't go over too many restrictions.
Yeah, this is a scary situation for us, because that line that you've got on that map was drawn by some determination, you know? We don't know what that was, but what was in their mind is to achieve the 50% or 51% vote of the 66% of the appraised property value. We just feel that there could be an underlying motive on that map of the proposed assessed zone. So, you know, we're dealing with a lot of unknowns, but we've got a lot of concerns since we are inside that boundary line and the way it was proposed.
I don't... I'm not aware, Mr. Pope, you may enlighten us. I don't know of any legal authority we have to tell Mooresville that they can't annex somebody. Or should they do so that they don't have the authority under this statute not to assess them? I guess we could be a real thorn in their flesh and say, hey, you can assess them, but we're not gonna collect it.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
We have a contract with them as regard to that. I don't... you know, the... there were 15 or 20 different bills introduced in the legislature this last session having to do with changing the annexation, involuntary annexation laws. I think there were some amendments that were enacted, but I frankly don't know what they were. I think it made it a little more difficult to annex involuntarily. I recall that one of the bills that was being discussed and I think was adopted was one that would require a vote when the property owners in the area requested it. It would be worth looking at. If I were these gentlemen, I'd want to look at that legislation that passed and figure out exactly what the town can do involuntarily. out, uh, exactly what, uh, the town can do involuntarily.
Is it not true that, uh, it would have to be unanimous and, and, uh, that, that no one would be opposed to it? I remember from the last time we were, we read through this, it had to be unanimous, and there was no, no opposition, a property owner.
Are you talking about for the, uh, annexation or for the assessment?
Assessment.
Um, I don't recall that. I don't, I don't.
This law did change to the fifty, to the majority and sixty-six percent. Uh, it was, it was a different percentage, and it had to be, uh, it was not, it was not a hundred percent of the, of the assessed areas. I mean, there wasn't an assessed area like this. The former po, policy said that anyone that was going to be assessed had to, their property had to abut the project. In this case, it's at the liberty of the board to decide how large that assessed district is or how small it is.
Do you, do you know who initiated this change in legislation?
Mr. Hartzell.
Now, I can see, like I said, I can see the benefit i, if it was for a development where you want to put in infrastructure, uh, but in this case where it's a mixed match and it's, and it's a lot larger number, uh, cost-wise, uh, to me, it's the mixed end.
Did y'all contact Senator Hartzell and ask him what prompted him to all of a sudden decide to change this legislation?
We contacted Gray Mills, who was our representative, okay, and to question him about it. So, actually, we had a meeting with Gray Mills, um, last week to, to discuss, uh, all the issues that we've laid out here, and, uh, and he was going to study the legislation closely and get back to us with some of his thoughts about it.
We're seeking all avenues.
While you respect the Senator Hartzell, he, I've read some of the legislation that he's put forth, and I'll be kind and say he needs to get somebody else to write his legislation for him. He doesn't do a very good job.
I'd be interested in, in the motivation.
You get, you get on that scent, and you've got, that, those are the questions that you start asking, because the, the light, the light can sometimes make people very uncomfortable. So, ask the questions. That's what we do. Um, and the, the last thing is, I, I just noticed in the newspaper, which I know that sometimes people can get paraphrased, but anytime you have proponents saying that, well, that they're okay with most of the burden potentially falling on them, what that really means is they're more than happy to let you carry as much as they can get off of their plate onto yours. So, if I was you, I would continue to, to be very diligent because obviously the folks who are looking for you to pay this part have, uh, are well organized and probably well-financed.
Oh, oh, yes, this bridge, I think, has been in the works for over a year, and a developer, I think, paid half the cost, and the, the town matched them in funding the, uh, the stud, the highway study and the bridge estimates. So, this has been in the works, it just didn't happen overnight.
Well, this, this is indicative of what, what so, what happens so often in Raleigh, that law was written with very little consideration of the impact at the local level. And it's, uh, you should never, you should ever, never enact law without giving some deliberation, the House is going to impact people in their everyday lives, and they do that quite often.
And, and just to boil this down for everybody, I, I mean, I, I understand what you guys are talking about, but just to boil it down, fifty people can go out and, and ask the town of Mooresville to tax fifty other people to pay for their project. That's the bottom line on this. And if the town of Mooresville decides to do it, that's the way the statute's written. And, you know, that's.
And that, that feels like tyranny and oppression that our forefathers came here to get away from.
It, it feels that way where I sit, you know?
It really does.
I'm not on the, I'm not in the town of Mooresville, though.
But, but you know, the fact that you guys are our elected officials, and we've got somebody else dictating this to us, is really what's upsetting to us, that we're kind of have no control.
It's upsetting to me.
Thank you.
We do what we can.
If I understand the statute correctly, though, at some point, in order to assess you, they will have to annex you.
Right.
Well, and then, one of the saving graces is, well, this is a twelve-step process. Now, once it gets to the, uh, was it Local Government Commission, they have to put their stamp of approval on it before anything goes further. Now, we're just looking at all the avenues that we can approach to bring this to light, um, maybe, maybe it'll get stopped there, I'm not sure, because it does feel like it's a, it's a fairness issue that, that's, that's, it's not being delegated correctly across the population.
And this is a very dangerous situation, being the first time it's been applied in North Carolina, of, of, if it takes off, of where it could just have repercussions across the state, and, and, and affect a lot of, a lot of people that are hurting or in need that, uh, that just couldn't afford, uh, an assessment for a, a project.
Okay. Would it, would it be in order for us to craft a letter to our legislative delegation in Raleigh to express our concerns about the impact it will have on, on these gentlemen and their neighbors, and ask them to revisit this issue?
It could be in order. I'd offer a motion that we instruct our, the clerk, our board to craft a letter indicating that, uh, we're concerned of the financial hardship that will be visited upon people who may be assessed for the construction of this road, and, uh, we respectfully ask that our legislative delegation reconsider this legislation, and, uh, amend it to avoid any financial detriment to people who, who may be assessed.
Did, did it pass the House or just the Senate?
My understanding it was signed into law last Friday.
Signed into law last, yeah. Beth, yeah, Beth Purdue signed it. It was set on her desk, and she signed it, uh, Wednesday, Thursday.
All agree to that.
Motion's been made. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all, you fellows keep us, you fellows keep us abreast of what's going on, and we'll, uh, do what we can to help you.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate it.
We will.
Meetings now in public hearing, rezoning request, case number 0907-1, uh, Mary Blance Kennedy requests to rezone .94 acres on Eagle Mills Road from residential agriculture to neighborhood business.
Thank you Chairman Williams, Board of Commissioners. Uh, this is just under an acre of property which is located on Eagle Mills Road, currently zoned residential agriculture, and Ms. Kennedy would like to rezone it to NB, Neighborhood Business, and this is a straight NB request. This is, um, one acre of approximately two hundred, this is a very large tract, as you can see here, uh, this, this is the piece, and this is the remaining one hundred and ninety-eight acres. Currently on the site, there is a, among, with all of the, the wooded area and the, uh, uh, some, some buildings that are located on the tract, there are a couple of businesses that are already located there, or one business and one past business. Um, the Eagle Mills Country Store, which would be subject to this rezoning, is a legally non-conforming business, meaning that they can operate in perpetuity with certain conditions. And this building, which was built several years ago as a home business, there's a, there's a, a, a residence on the property as well, and they had used this as a home occupation several years ago, but it's been vacant for over a year. This is looking south on Eagle Mills Road, looking across the property, or across the road from the property, and then looking north on Eagle Mills. So you can see, this is a very rural area, uh, and this would be probably one of the only businesses that would be, or business districts that would be located out in the area, and certainly some of the only businesses. Currently in our land use plan, we do not have this area designated for commercial use. However, through the 2030 plan, we have designated this as a very small, uh, neighborhood business or, or neighborhood commercial node, and based on that, even though the plan has not been adopted, we are recommending in favor of it, uh, because we've put quite a bit of study into this and, and feel it's a legitimate and logical use for this area. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, has anyone here wishes to speak either for or against this, this proposal? Seeing no one, I declare this public hearing closed. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment, to make a finding that although the proposal is not consistent with the 1997 Iredell County Land Use Plan, the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. You heard the motion, is there any, any debate?
It's about as simple as it gets here.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four oh. We're now in public hearing to hear a rezoning request, case number 0906-1, please Darrell Jones, request to rezone 3.9 acres at 111, at, at 1169 Turnersburg Highway from residential agriculture to highway business conditional district.
This second request that we have is to Highway Business CD, this is our new conditional zoning, and there are several conditions that I'm going to go through for you that have been agreed to by the applicant at either the app, the time of application or at the planning board meeting where they, the planning board had requested, uh, Mr. Jones to add additional conditions to the, to the request. The first is that only seventy-two square feet total of signage, two separate driveways with a maximum width of twenty-four feet each, the driveways will be separated by a landscaped island, the only use shall be automotive repair and service, all lighting shall be contained on the site, no unnecessary, and, and no unnecessary removal of trees. Now, those are, those were the original conditions agreed to by Mr. Jones. The following are the conditions that were, were put into place at the planning board meeting. The entire building must be insulated for noise control, including the compressor building. Hours of operation shall be limited to eight to six, Monday through Friday, and eight to one on Saturday, no Sunday operating hours. The parking lot must be paved within twenty-four months of approval. Any vehicle that is inoperable or is unpaid must be stored in the main building or within the designated storage area as shown on the approved site plan, and the storage area must be enclosed by a fence of at least six feet in height that is opaque, or you can't see through it. Uh, Mr. Jones has agreed to those conditions, um, both sets. This property is located about a mile north of the interchange of 21 and 77. Uh, it's in a transitional area. I'm going to go through some pictures here and, and several maps, so I'll try and explain what I mean by transitional. Uh, this is showing our 2030 future land use. In the, in the current 1997 land use plan, we do not have this designated as commercial. However, in looking at this request, uh, we have decided through the 2030 plan to recommend that this be included in a commercial node. This is an aerial photo of the property, and I'll point out at least two commercial uses that are very close to Mr. Jones's property. Uh, this is a, a trucking company here on Bethany Road, and a grading operation here. And then there are a number of other commercial uses that are, that are up and down 21. However, I will say that Mr. Jones's direct neighbors here are residential in, in nature. And, and you can see that, you know, even this one here is kind of a cutout of, of This shows the site plan, uh, that Mr. Jones has submitted, and, uh, goes through with what would be required and what he would be tied to do, and I'll come back to that. This is the building, um, Mr. Jones built this building on the site, so this is a, this is a non-conforming building as it stands right now, uh, built it as an accessory to a home that was on the property and got it, got permits under the accessory building or home occupation, uh, standards, and has since decided for numerous reasons that you can ask him, since he is here, uh, that this is going to op, he wa, would like to operate this as a business. This is looking north along Turnersburg Highway or 21. And this is, this is Bethany Road, which I mentioned a minute ago where the trucking company's located. This is looking south towards the interchange with the house that was located on the property, which has since been, uh, been torn down. This is looking across the road, which is, uh, there's a home over here and here, and fairly vacant between the two. And this is the home that was on the right side of that, that property across the street. The traffic on 21 at this area, uh, it's, it's slated to handle, um, thirty, or thirteen thousand trips per day, uh, it's right at eight thousand now. Uh, so, basically, I don't feel like Mr. Jones's use of this property as, as a commercial entity is going to push that anywhere near capacity. Uh, in the future, we'll have to consider the ramifications, but at this point, it's pretty far below it. This is another situation where we, we do not have it designated, or this, this request does not comply with our current land use plan. The 97 plan, as I mentioned, does not designate this as commercial property. However, in the 2030 plan, which was a dot, which was recommended for approval by the planning board, uh, everyone has agreed to move forward at this, to this point with this area as commercial, not just Mr. Jones's property, but, uh, several others leading up to it. Uh, we haven't moved so far as to go all the way to Bethany Road, uh, but filling in from Jones back down essentially was what we thought was reasonable. The planning board did not recommend in favor of this request. Uh, I don't think that, uh, and you've got access to the minutes, uh, there was some debate about the, uh, the compliance with the future, the 2030 plan, and there was also a good bit of discussion about the permitting process of the building. In our staff recommendation, we've tried to not consider the events leading up to this as far as permitting and the construction of the building, but we've looked at what we feel is reasonable from a land use perspective. And I believe that Mr. Jones and also some of his neighbors are here tonight that can, uh, that probably will expand on some of the things that have gone on to this point, but our staff recommendation is to recommend in favor of the request. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Smith? If there are none, um, those who'd like to speak in favor of this request, or if you're opposed to this request, uh, you'll have your opportunity now to speak. State your name.
Name, Darrell Jones, this is my wife, Brandy. Um, we've got a little proposal here we're wanting to read out to you. Um, this is our last shot, it's very, uh, important to us, this, this, hopefully this is the way we're going to provide for our family.
I'm sorry, could you move your microphone a little bit closer?
Uh, we've got a little proposal here we're wanting to read, uh, because this is our last shot, and we're wanting to try to, uh, you know, to do everything we can, because this is the way we're going to have to be supporting our family. Uh, so I'm going to let her read this thing for us.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandy Jones and my husband, Darrell Jones. We are here tonight requesting rezoning for our property located at 1169 Turnersburg Highway. We have been through a lot with the property, and we probably should have never even purchased it, but we did. We have been through a lot with the property and we probably should have never even purchased it, but we did. On December the 19th of 2008, we bought the property from a Mr. Michael Lance and a Mr. Michael Moose, approximately 3.93 acres. The purpose in purchasing the property was because we was working in construction and the bottom fell out. So we began working on automobiles at our home. Because we had, because we had to find a way to provide for our family, because our oldest daughter has a lot of medical expenses due to multiple sclerosis. So the next step was we went to William Allison and asked about putting a building on that piece of property. So William told us that since the house was there, we could get a permit for a rural home occupation to work on street rods. At this point, William went over that we didn't have enough room for our setbacks on the side. So at this time, we went and spoke to Mr. and Mrs. Stevenson about purchasing the piece of property beside of us. The Stevenson's at that time was trying to put a single wide trailer on a lot, but was having a lot of problems because of the width of the mobile home. It was a 40 by 80 foot trailer and the lot was only 78 feet wide. So at that time, we suggested if they would like to have the same amount of land on the backside of the property, and then we agreed that we would clear the lot and we would move the trailer and put it back the same way it was in the front, back on blocks. We would pay all survey attorney fees and it cost us around five grand to get, to get complete with all the work that was complete before we signed the deeds. Then we pursued on clearing the property, then we, then we bought our permits and began our building.
Got about 45 seconds to finish up in.
Okay, let me go on. So, yeah.
Well, basically, bottom line is on this is when we bought this property, you can see where the house is on there, the trees, stuff that's grown up above the house. But anyway, I took and I built a building on the home occupation and I was understanding, in my mind, that I could do this with that old house there. Okay, well, after, you know, I found out some different things and the planning board come and asked me to shut down because I didn't do exactly some things right. So I apologized to the planning board, I've done everything they've asked. And, you know, I made a mistake, but I was, you know, I brought the work from up there to my, up there to my house, trying to work to provide for my family. And I just, I wouldn't, I thought the house would be fine to be there to be able to run that business out of, because that's what a home occupation rule is. And so if this don't get passed, the only choice I have is to put a single wide there, which I've done and bought a permit to do that, so I can run the garage. And the lot that I got from the Stevenson's on the side, we had a problem with the septic tank. Their land wouldn't perk and mine wouldn't either. So we're in some legal actions with that. And so that's been addressed by my attorney. And, I mean, I don't know what else to say about it.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions? If not, is anyone else wish to speak?
I live diagonally across the road from Mr. Jones's property. And I see no problem with him running a business out of there. He's not going to, you know, make too much traffic on 21 or make too much noise because that trucking company on Bethany Road is very noisy, going to be a lot noisier than he is. And this is the way he's got to support in his family and I see nothing wrong with it.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wish to speak, either for or against?
Mr. Chairman, committed. My name is Robert Stevenson and basically, we own the land that they traded out with us. And we're currently on the legal actions with that property. And basically, the community of Bethany are opposing this rezoning because of certain reasons. As everyone know, on that certain stretch of highway, there is a lot of traffic. There has been a lot of accidents, there has been a lot of fatalities just right in front of where he's getting ready to put this building. And with him having business right there and cars coming in and out, it's going to be twice as bad as it is now. And we have Mr. Paul Frye and he has problems with the way that the land is made where it's basically going to cause erosion for his property. And across the street, we have Joe Stevenson and Edith. And I think they have a problem with it because of their, Mr. Joe's sister that lives across the street, she's probably 90 years old and she lives by herself. And basically, all of these accidents has been right in front of her house, so... Speaking for the community of Bethany, I want to oppose this.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Chairman, Mr. Commissioners. My name is Sean Turner and I, we run a business just right out on the road from where this property, this proposed property is at. And we're, speaking from Turner Landscaping and my father, we're in a pose of this for quite a few reasons. And one of the reasons was if I approach, as the applicant says, he approached under a certain permit and he, he went right on and did something opposite of the permit that he purchased or that he applied for with the rural home permit. And went right on in the business and started, started working. He did nothing to, as far as working towards fixing up this house or the house was not livable when he purchased it. He started building a new building to run a business out of. And when we put up our building in 1988, we had to go through a lot of regulations to be able to put up our metal building. And we went through the proper channels and we even had to go as far as to Raleigh to be able to get our building up. And it laid on the ground for, I know, for a year or longer. And for someone to be rewarded for going about it the wrong way, I have a real problem with that. And also, in the zoning meeting, it was stated that one of the things that he would have to comply with or do was be, he would need at least 24 months to work in operation before he would have to pave his parking lot. And I don't know, is that, does the county give out these different things, the different companies all over the county, or just someone who's coming to, as he is applying for this rezoning? Also, during the plant, the planning board meeting, Mr. Tomus, I think, brought up the 2030 plan. And that if it was approved, then it possibly would meet this rezoning. And I had a problem with that, that night, because at that point in time, there was nothing approved of the 2030 plan, of the Horizon Plan that I knew of. And Mr. Jones was coming back tonight to apply for this tonight on the considerations of the 2030 plan and that this would be in the 2030 plan. And I, I felt like that it shouldn't not be considered because of the 2030 plan when he didn't come in to, to this idea of purchasing or doing this with this property with anything with a 2030 plan, if it's not in effect. Also, I had a problem with having another business, a business owner within our community who actually is not going to have any, has any respect for the county if he went in to start a business by wrongdoing in the beginning. And he also, he has no respect, hasn't shown much respect for the other neighbors. These neighbors that just came up and spoke here tonight. In your planning board meeting, you'll see where he had went in and used water, used water meters without asking, did a lot of different things, without even asking permission, so...
Mr. Chairman, I've got about 45 seconds.
I would just be in a pose of having this business opened up or would propose a rezoning this area for this business. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Can I speak on, there's concerns, I have some things here that like the water receipts, where a lot of this stuff that was said is not so from Iredell Water. And I've got a letter from my attorney stating that that is my problem and it's legal. And there's just a lot of things that is addressed that is turned into a circus. And I have respected the board, I applied with everything they wanted to do. I built it on a home occupation and I was just doing it as the work I was doing at the house. And then, and you know, and I followed all the inspection things, I'd done everything I was supposed to do. And what it was is they got a call from the health department because of the septic tank issue. And that's what we're having a problem over now. And if I get this done, I'm going to have to spend about $54,000 to bring this up and to be able to run this job. And because on the land that I got from Michael Moose and all, is where I'm going to have to put my septic tank and all that stuff. And I've done everything I can to try to please the Stevenson's doing everything. So I couldn't do that, so I got me an attorney, in which he's already proved that a lot of it was just bogus. And I have applied with everything Ron done, I mean, everything as far as the permit and highway and DOT, everything. I've done everything and I apologize and it's been sitting there, you know, making payments on. And, you know, that land, when I bought it, I figured you could buy land and do something with it to support your family. And then when I, you know, the home on it was just ragged out and I done and gutted it out to do work on it.
Okay. Anyone of the Commissioners have any questions, any of these people who spoke? Okay. Hearing none, if no one else wishes to speak, I declare this public hearing closed. And I'll now accept a motion.
Can I ask Ron one question?
Ask questions.
To Ron.
Yes. Staff.
Yeah, Ron. So how did this first start? If somebody lives on a dwelling, they can build another building and that, and run a business out of it, and that's legal?
Yes, that is. We have different types of home businesses. This would be a rural home occupation. And you can build a relatively large building and meet certain requirements and as long as, one of the big things is you can't have outside storage. And that's what it was permitted for. There were some specific conditions attached to it, but that's what it was permitted for and did meet the intent of the permit.
And they lived on the property at that time?
That was, there were two kind of flags that came up late in the process. And Mr. Jones did go through all of his permitting process and received a CO. He did get, he went so far as to get a CO on the property. At some point, we got involved because the house was not habitable. So no one was going to live on the property, at least in that house. And the second was, you know, when you look at the building, that's not what I generally consider a rural home occupation. It looks like a garage to me. And Mr. Jones was operating. So that's how we ended up getting involved and kind of finding out, you know, to the degree of what was going on. And, you know, I'd be glad to answer any...
Do they live there now?
Pardon me?
Are they living there now?
Uh, no, nobody's living there now. Mr. Jones has come in and gotten a permit from us to put a mobile home on the property that would make it legal to operate a rural home occupation. So it's possible that he could do what he originally wanted to do without the rezoning.
But there would be no outside storage...
Correct.
Of vehicles.
Correct.
Other than in the area that's marked for storage you have on the site plan?
Well, if it were going under the rural home occupation, there's no outside storage. It has to be inside.
But if it were rezoned, it would?
Yes.
So if he had come and asked for rezoning prior to beginning construction or seeking the permit as a rural home occupation business, then all of this argument of whether he was legal and what his intention would be largest or perfluous, it would not be under consideration. We would simply debate the merits of the rezoning request.
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's what we should be doing in any event, is debating the merits of the rezoning request. And I think that's what Mr. Smith said when he first got up here to make his presentation. Is that a motion?
No, my mental process, that's what I'm thinking.
Oh, you may have been making a thought.
I'm not here to judge a man's motives or whatever. I don't know that, I'm certainly not qualified to do it. And if I were, I'm not sure it's the role of this board.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman, according to the wording here on page whatever.
Motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that although the proposal is, excuse me, not consistent with the 1997 Iredell County Land Use Plan, the approval is consistent with the anticipated adoption of the 2030 Horizon Plan and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
Pardon the motion, any other discussion?
Is it not abnormal that we give them two, that people are allowed in this situation two years to apply to the standard, whereas if they had come first to get the permit and they would have had to have complied with all those regulations in order to open the business?
Was that part of the conditional use?
Well, I'm glad you had mentioned that, actually. The, that 24-month timeframe is for them to pave the parking lot, that's all. And we don't generally require that, you know, that's, you don't have to pave a parking lot in this county. But what the planning board wanted to see was that eventually that parking lot be paved. Now, DOT will require that Mr. Jones, if he gets this, pave from the pavement to the right of way, to the end of the right of way, which could be 10, 20 feet, something like that. So there's a hard surface coming in and out of. So that would actually happen relatively soon, I would expect. And then they would have up to 24 months to pave the parking lot. Actually, the paving of a parking lot is not a standard condition that we put in place.
But it is a condition that Mr. Jones accepted.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, no?
No.
Motion, Mr. Marvin, or are you denied?
Well, under a tie, facing the motion papers.
Seeing it's a tie, the motion fails.
Is there some motion that could be offered on mine or Ms. Cattail's behalf that you gentlemen could find more agreeable?
One of the concerns I have is just with their, with their ability to know what to do, to do what's legally required of everybody else. And on top of that, I mean, they're tossing out, he said, it's gonna cost him fifty thousand dollars to handle one other problem on their property. They gotta pave a parking lot. I mean, it just seems like for a small car repair business, they're already looking at a pretty difficult financial situation. I'm just not so sure if we say, if we say yes, that, um, that they're gonna be able to do those things or gonna be right back here in twenty-four months talking about, well, the driveway's not paved and, well, should it be? I just don't see something that makes me confident that, that no matter what we say, it's gonna get, it's gonna get taken care of.
You mean, Mr. Chairman, he's talking about the driveway? Is that the only thing?
Just all the stuff that's been discussed. I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of unanswered issue, unresolved issues.
But that would be an enforcement issue with the Planning Department. And I understand that I'm getting pretty close to being out of order 'cause I just lost a vote. But I'm just trying to resolve the matter. I know the heart of you two gentlemen, if you could help this guy, you would.
Right. But on the flip side, I also don't wanna send a message, go, go build what you want, where you want, beg forgiveness, and then we'll cut you a deal. That's a bad precedent to set and that concerns me more than just a little bit as well.
Well, I understand, but the, here's a question I've always had as long as I've been here that. We need to have a land use plan and we need to have regulations, but sometimes, honest to goodness, folks, when government plans too much, it makes it difficult for private citizens to plan. So you can, you can overdo anything. And we assume that when we sit here and we deliberate these issues between ourselves that everyone is as knowledgeable about the process as we are or the staff is. And actually, as they go through it, it's a learning process for them. And the staff does a good job to educate them as they go along. Obviously, they have in this case, 'cause I can guarantee you, Mr. Jones is far more knowledgeable about a zoning process than he was a few months ago. Yep. I just don't want us to punish someone, not simply because they were ignorant of the process.
Well, when they got the first permit and it said you had to live there and they didn't live there, that's, that wasn't, that was, that was knowing what the rules were and not following.
Agreeing, agreeing with that.
Had he not done that, I would have voted in favor.
Well, my question is, are we a punitive board here? Uh, or are we here to, as Mr. Smith said, evaluate the suitability of this property for rezoning? And as much as we'd like to right wrongs, uh, I'm not sure we're not out of our lane when we start trying to go back and deal with what enforcement should have been done and, and what he should have been doing in the past. I'm looking at this piece of property, frankly, not considering who even owns it. I'm just considering whether this use is appropriate and I think that's what, that's what our job is. And, 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 uh, Mr. Chairman, I realize we're both a little bit out of order, but if, if the paving is a concern, perhaps he could post a bond.
He'd had time to think of a counter motion, John.
Oh, Mr. Pope, I'd be out of order to make a motion at this point, wouldn't I? It'd have to come from somebody on the prevailing side, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Doggone it.
Can't think of anything.
Okay.
Does it have to be done tonight? Can, can we?
Hey, may I read from your rules of procedure?
Yep. Yes, sir.
When no consideration for six months, when a substantive motion has been defeated, the board shall not consider that motion again for six months, except on the motion of a member who voted with the prevailing side or who was absent from the meeting at which the original vote was taken.
You got Marvin's not.
Marvin up to take the phone call.
That means it could be brought back up.
Yeah.
One of you guys could, or Marvin.
We, that's right. Godfrey, I could bring it up for Marvin. Okay.
That'll have to. That's gonna have to take consideration.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. Number C, consideration of a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the town of Mooresville for an area located at the Mooresville Business Park between the Zephyr Road and NC eight oh one. Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, I move that we approve the release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction for the subject area to the town of Mooresville.
Well, we can have that. I guess we can entertain that motion, but we need to let people talk.
We have to let them talk.
Well, first off, start out by saying that there is, there has been one change that the town has asked for, and that's to remove the Penske, the two Penske properties from this request. From staff perspective, I think I had recommended to you that we, we're in favor of this request. Uh, it's for six properties, um, hundred and fifty-six acres. This is the Mooresville, South Iredell Industrial Park. Uh, the town has been consistent in applying their industrial designations to these properties. So we're, we're in favor of this, but they, that was with Penske, but we're also in favor of it without Penske. And the idea behind removing Penske is because there has been a great deal of talk about the opening of, or the, or the process of going through the application for the test track that was applied for a couple of years ago. So that is the impetus for that. Uh, and if you would like to hear from Tim Brown, the Planning Director for the town of Mooresville, he is here tonight and can answer any questions that you have.
But Mr. Smith, to be sure, to be sure, it is now your recommendation you're bringing to us that we approve this release of jurisdiction minus the two Penske parcels.
Yes, sir.
And that was my motion as well.
Mr. Brown? Would you like to reaffirm what he just said?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. Members of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, I would like to confirm that that is indeed the request. More specifically, the properties they in question are owned by Penske Realty LLC. By PIN number reference, they're four six six eight six six three zero four seven and four six eight six four four two five.
Can you show that on the map just for the record?
Um, I can. Uh, and I'd be glad to do that, Ron. Uh, that's this parcel and this parcel here. And so the remaining, remaining properties are owned by the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation. And with this request, we would provide consistent municipal zoning to the properties that would ultimately help expedite future industrial development of these properties. At this point, there's no development proposed for the properties, but it works to better position these properties for industrial development in the future by eliminating a timeframe associated with transitioning from county zoning to municipal zoning to receive municipal utilities. So with that, we, on behalf of the town of Mooresville and the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, I would request the county commissioners consider releasing the remaining parcels from the original request to receive town of Mooresville zoning jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Brown? Hearing none. We are in public hearing. This time, anyone wish to speak either for or against this release? Come to this podium. State your name.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Coralie Plasse. My husband Chuck and I own land adjacent to the Mooresville Industrial Park. Uh, in nineteen eighty-nine, the land which is now the Mooresville Industrial Park was first zoned. We were grateful to Iredell County at that time because they incorporated a zoning, they actually created a zoning that was conducive to economic and industrial development while at the same time imposing restrictions which protected the citizens who lived in proximity to the park. And over the years, Iredell County has fulfilled its promise to us, the nearby residents, by upholding those covenants. And we just respectfully request that you maintain control over the parcels of land in question. We did not realize that the other parcels had already gone to Mooresville, but most of these other parcels already have industry on them. And we would just ask that you maintain your control until such time that you know what industries are coming and that you are sure that those industries will not pose a problem to the residents, 'cause it's surrounded by a lot of residential areas. I kept wondering why Mooresville at this time wanted these properties to be moved over. And evidently, it is for the sake of time and to expedite things. But for those of us who have made our homes on the land surrounding this park, sometimes land that has been in our families for generations, you know, four extra weeks is not a long time to make sure that whatever comes to this park is, is proper and is beneficial to all concerned. I would just like to make one final point, and that is this. Most of us who live in the area surrounding the park are not residents of Mooresville. That means we have no vote, no representation on the town board. You are our only elected representatives. And we would just simply like to ask that you continue to accept the responsibility that was given to you so many years ago and that you would continue to ensure that we, your constituents, the members or the people of Iredell County, including the residents of Mooresville, that you would ensure that we will be protected, uh, under the covenants and the zoning that Iredell County set forth when this park was first instituted. Thank you very much.
I am Jody Brown. My property, like Coralie's, is adjacent to the industrial park. Um, when my family, generations and generations ago, went there, it was cow pastures. It was not an industrial park. So for those of you who are thinking like the people in the paper wrote, then why did you buy next to an industrial park? Why didn't an industrial park become developed within a neighborhood? So we are not a part of Mooresville. We do not have any vote. We have no rights. As you can see from what's happening with Mr. Brotherton, Mooresville has no problem whatsoever rewriting their desires down whoever's throat they would like to do so. We voted for you guys. I voted for most of you guys, not all of you, but I voted for most of you. We appreciate the fact that when we were here earlier about another issue, you listened to us, we felt like you heard us. We need someone that we have a voice with to keep control over this property because we have no voice. We don't want to be annexed into Mooresville. If you could see my property values, just because Penske's behind my house, I don't wanna have a housing development. I don't wanna sell it for the two point five million I've been offering. I, I don't want rid of my property. This is my family. This is my home. This is Coralie's family. This is their home. This is Gerald's family and home. We don't want the millions. We don't want the money. We don't wanna develop. We just want to have a neighborhood. And you are the only people that can protect us. Mooresville's not gonna protect us. It is so in their favor to cram every bit of industry into there that they can. And they can change any rules they wanna change once they get it. Because it's tax-based for them. I understand that. But those of us that surround it, we don't wanna be a part of Mooresville. It's a lovely town, but I don't wanna be a part of it. That's why I bought in the country. We beg you, please, protect the people that voted for you. Please, hear us this time. We have no power. You know, you sit here and you hear us for five minutes and I appreciate that time. Five minutes, the rest of my life, the rest of my dad's life, the rest of these people's lives, it's nothing. It's nothing. So please don't take this lightly. I know you hear this every meeting. This is important. This is the rest of our lives. And we need you to protect us. We need you to protect us. And that's what we're asking you tonight. Maintain control of property that is Iredell County property, not Mooresville property. Please, don't push this forward. They're gonna annex us next. You know that. You know why they want to speed this process up, because it takes even the little bit of voice we have away. It does. And I know money talks. And gosh, if I had it, I'd give y'all what I have, 'cause it means nothing to me. It means nothing to me. My home does. And you people right here are getting ready to decide what happens. And if that's emotional, not business, I'm sorry, but this is my home. I don't want them running. I want my home. Thank you for your time.
I'm speaking for many people in the area and the people who live on Woodridge Lane also and some of the homeowners adjacent to the property that's gonna be released or possibly being released. You saw all of us as homeowners, farmers, generational family properties, the last time we were here, and you saw that we were entitled to a family dream, to live in peace and quiet, to have peace of mind when ending our day of work. That was the right thing to do. We appreciated each and every one of you voting that way. We're asking you to do the right thing again. Do not release these properties to Mooresville so they can change our way of life drastically by allowing to build a track or a company that wants to change the restrictions or, uh, we just ask that you stand up and help us fight as you did a couple of years ago. We know that the release of these properties are coming at a pretty conspicuous time because the restrictions on the ten-year restriction rule just happened to disappear September fifth. Um, so that means anybody who purchases the properties that are being released can change those restrictions after the fifth of September. And the ninth of September, they're going to rezone even the property behind us. And so they have the opportunity to rezone any property that you released to them, um, which means that unfortunately, people like Penske could buy any portion of those released. They have the money to do any of that back there, any lot they want. If you release these properties to the town of Mooresville, the only good neighbors that we're gonna have are each other. We will be the ones who endure a test track, the loud noise, the fumes, whatever comes from a property that should not be there because of. because of hopefully the restrictions that stay in place and hopefully the county keeping this property until, like has been said prior, that they know, you know, what is coming in there, what we have to deal with every day when we come home from work or we spend Saturday and Sunday not being able to sit in our yard because of the noise or the construction that's going on around daily with these type of businesses coming in. So we just are asking you to please help us hold on to these properties in the county of Iredell. Thank you.
Gentlemen, my name is Gerald Brown. Our family's been out on this property for well over 100 years. I have four statements to make, and only four statements. Mr. Brown, may I look at him, sir? Mr. Brown, my brother came to you last Thursday when he got a letter saying that this meeting was going to be held, I'm sorry, Thursday a week ago. He asked you what it meant. You told him you had no idea. You took a copy of the letter he had and ran a copy because you said you knew nothing about it. Yet you're here today representing the South Iredell Industrial Commission. What didn't you know when the letter went out that you know now? That's item number one. Our neighborhood bought the original industrial park when Meshuista was coming in, in 1989. They won, we lost. But Meshuista was a wonderful neighbor. Had no complaints about them. The other people who have moved into the park have been wonderful neighbors. Have no complaints about them. But certain covenants were established then to sort of restrict what happened at industrial park. We don't know if you lose your zoning authority and the Town of Mooresville takes it over, whether or not those covenants are null and void. Nobody will tell us. The people who have worked against us since day one out there, and really it's a cuss word, and that's the only reason I'm standing up here. Tim is representing the South Iredell Industrial Commission. The South Iredell Industrial Commission has been a thorn in our side since this thing started. They would make commitments and not live up to them. That's still going on now as far as we're concerned. I have one more statement to make, and I'm going to quote you, Mr. Steve Johnson, if you said earlier, if I may. You said to someone who was sitting in the very place I'm standing right here, and I'm almost quoting you, don't quote me, but I'm close. You said, "A law is written with a little concern for the local area." You're writing a law tonight, and we're the local area. Think about that. Thank you, sir.
I have been in and out all of these little roads.
Please state your name.
Try. I'm sorry. I have been in and out all these little roads. And they're all full of people that, they're good neighbors. The Wallace Grant Road, look how close it is. That's the one that they went in in 89 and it's the one that they, only one they had to go in, I suppose. But it is full of homes. You can't see all the other little roads, but this highway, 150. It's full of homes, and it's so close. I live on the overhead bridge road. I don't know whether you can see it on there or not. But it's right directly in front of these properties. And I, today and yesterday, all day, there was testing, car testing, outside. I have told them I didn't mind them doing that if they just tested one car at a time because they had promised five cars at a time. But it was all day today and yesterday. Even with it raining, they thought I wouldn't be outside, but I was. I'm always outside, my people know me. Anyway, please keep it under the CD, CU, D zoning. Don't let it go where we don't know what they, they don't have any feelings for us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Eric Brown. I'm a neighbor to the business park. And I'd just like to make one opposition statement. I think you can tell by now, most of the neighbors of the industrial park don't really trust the Town of Mooresville. And we can vote in the, for the county elected officials. We can't vote for Mooresville elected officials. And we would ask that you continue to leave it that way by leaving this under your zoning jurisdiction. Thank you.
Anyone else wish, wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if I could apologize to Mr. Brown. First of all, I was confused by the original request and apologize for that confusion. Yes, indeed, we are asking, making this request on behalf of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation. The intent is to establish municipal zoning on those pro, on the properties that we are requesting to be released. We, again, we, we are not including the Penske properties deliberately to eliminate any fear or misconception that there's a proposed test track on those properties. That is certainly not the case. There are no plans for economic development for these properties to date. And then the last point that I would like to make, Iredell County's in establishing the zoning for these parcels imposed zoning conditions on two occasions. One was in 1977, 87, and the other was in 2007. The town's intent would be to maintain all of the conditions that were originally proposed in those rezonings by Iredell County upon the establishment of municipal zoning on those properties. There were several comments with regard to covenants associated with these properties. I'm not aware of any covenants that would have, that are, other than those that were established through a zoning process. That if there are covenants associated with the property, they were established by deed restriction. And the, and the, to our, to my knowledge, nor to Mr. Russ Rogerson's knowledge, who is the director of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, there are no covenants that would lapse or expire within a 10-year period. And again, those properties would, those covenants, if they do indeed exist, would run with the land. And are, are, so when the property is sold, those that are part of the deed restrictions would carry with the sale of the land. The zoning restrictions are really what would be imposed by the Town of Mooresville. And again, we would, we would maintain those that were previously proposed and adopted by this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Linda Overcash. My husband Dennis and I own Overcash Angus on Shimber Road, which is, as the bird flies, fairly close to this industrial park. Our farm is a green space that many cities now wish they had, that they didn't protect their green spaces, and they wish that they had something like our farm in their urban areas. Some year, I have always attended for many, many years the Town of Mooresville and the county commissioners' meetings. And some years ago, when the Town of Mooresville was discussing commercial development, I asked them, "What were your plans to protect our farm as a green space?" And their answer in an open, public forum was, "You do not vote for me, and we do not have any, any care about what happens to your farm." That was said in an open, public meeting. "You have, you do not vote for me, therefore we do not care." Y'all just said the pledge of allegiance tonight. And as y'all said that, I thought about your pledge for justice for all. You are the first wrong and the latter in the protection of the people for justice and for the citizens of Iredell County. If you turn this over to the Town of Mooresville, we have no protection. So I ask you, how can it help the citizens of our community if you hand this over to the Town of Mooresville? How can it help us? How will you be protecting us, as you just pledged to do? Anybody can answer that? How is it going to help us? The extra time they're talking about is our protection. And we all know, as you've heard from Mike Brotherton, and we've heard many times in many meetings, that Mooresville's only agenda is commercial development at all cost. So how is this going to help us? That's my question. How's it going to help our community? What's it going to do for us? If we give up this protection? If you give up our protection? And it's all in your hands. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Larry Leiser. I live in a neighborhood just across the road, across the woods. To give you an idea of sort of how things work, I mean, this gentleman here gives another gentleman a letter about what's going on and then tells him he don't know anything about it. That's just generally how things work there. The Town of Mooresville has become such a tyrant if trying to develop stuff. It's just, it's ridiculous. And if he says that there's nothing planned for this and there's no big hurry, then why give it away now to let them, you know, to put whatever they want on it? If there's no hurry, then Iredell County should keep jurisdiction over this property so whenever something comes in, we'll all have a, we will all have a say and be able to express our concerns on what goes in there. And I've, just from the way some of these people treat other people as far as the information that you can get out of them, I don't trust any of them from the Town of Mooresville. So please, help us. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I declare this public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, my prior motion was out of order. I made the motion in the, in the interest of moving things along on the agenda, having no idea that there was opposition to this or that we were going to enter a public hearing. My apologies to everyone and to the board for making a motion out of order, but it is withdrawn.
You withdrew the motion, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. I'm going to appear to be a little ignorant here. Mr. Mashburn, I, I know that, or Mr. Pope, whoever wishes to reply, I know that state law requires us to have a 10-day notice for a public hearing. That's correct, right?
I'm not sure if it's state law, if it's, if it's in our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, but there is a requirement that there be a 10-day notice, that's correct.
Okay, and we can hold a public hearing, a special call meeting, as long as we advertise it, is that correct?
That's correct.
I say, okay, so if we get some viable economic entity that's willing to locate here and invest a lot of money in Iredell County that really no one takes offense at, we're actually not talking about a 30-day delay. We actually, if we had a special call meeting, we could be talking about less than a two-week delay. If we called a special meeting and held a public hearing for the release of this jurisdiction, is, is that, is my logic correct?
Right. I believe that's right. Now, if they're to annex it, then they have a...
We have no authority to stop that anyway. I, I understand Mooresville's concerned that if they do get a prospect for development in industrial park, then they need to move expeditiously as possible, and I appreciate that. But, of course, I'm not saying this to butter anybody up, but I came here tonight thinking, well, we'll cut Penske out of this deal and we'll cut and go home. And I'm a hard guy to change your mind, I'm going to be honest with you. That young lady sitting back there in the corner, that's the best speech I've heard in this hall in a long time. And she hit me where I live. And these people did hire us to, to represent them. Now, you can argue and debate the seriousness or the validity of some of their arguments, but some of them do carry some weight, and they're to be listened to. So I would make it, I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and I know this is going to delight some and anger others, that we do deny this request with the understanding that if the greater, if the South Iredell Development Corporation does receive an inquiry by an industry that wished to locate in one of these articles, that it, parcels, that it would be the intent of the Board of Commissioners to call a special meeting in regard to the release of jurisdiction of this property. And that we advertise that, that meeting would, would occur according to our, our ordinance or state law, whichever is applicable. And they would hold that meeting, and they would discuss it, and we vote upon the release of jurisdiction, having heard from these folks. And that would give them a voice in the matter, and it would not seriously delay, delay the release of this jurisdiction or the possible locating of an industry here. And if, if a 10-day delay is going to drive a business away, I question how serious they were anyway.
Can I ask a question or two before we vote on it? Russ Rogerson did not come and, and, and say why he felt this was important. I'd like to, if you could come and specifically address what the motivation was.
Yeah, then thank you. Basically...
You could state your name and your position.
Russell Rogerson with the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation. The, the property, the 83 acres, which are three parcels put together, is zoned industrial, and that is a property that we market and we're trying to attract industries very similar to what's out there at the industrial park. Most companies are asking for rapid response when it comes to any kind of zoning or permitting of, of property. So when you're out there talking to these, these companies, quite frankly, there are communities that have actually, what they call it, an expedited process. So with the ETJ opportunity, the intent was simply to try to reduce the additional time it would take to go through the county's process and then through the towns so we'd be able to tell companies that we'd have 120 days we could potentially have a, the permits they needed to move forward for construction.
So you're saying that if we were to release this for ETJ, then it would be 120 days?
Yes.
Okay. And right now, what are you telling them that it would be?
I'm not as a zoning expert, but the process would be...
Probably add about another 45, 30 to 45 days.
30 to 45 days.
Okay. And, and Mr. Johnson has suggested that, that we could make it a, we could make it a policy, I guess, or we could write a letter or something that says that we would, that if, if requested by, it would, the request would not come from... the request would not come from the prospective buyer, it would come from the MSI DC for a hearing in 10 days, then could that 45 days turn into 10 days? Ron?
I'm going to ask Ron to speak for that.
I believe it could, and actually, the public hearing that you asked about earlier, for this particular case, for a release of jurisdiction, that's only, that's a policy of this board. It's not in our ordinance, it's not a state law or anything like that. Holding the current process we have with the notification in the public hearing is a policy. And that, you know, you can do what you want to with that, obviously. Cutting it down, we could cut it down to whatever you would like it to be, but cutting down to 10 days before a special call meeting would be not a problem whatsoever. We would just need to make sure we get it in the paper and notify property owners as your policy dictates.
And would that, if we had a letter to the MSI DC saying that the intent of this board, that if someone inquired, you know, about it, that we would hold a hearing within 10 days, is that something that you think that y'all could live with? Or is that something that would be, or is there some other problem that that would cause?
No. And our goal really is to not disrupt the process, allow a process to be complete, but make it as efficient as possible, so. And really, the ETJ request is based on, that was an avenue which to accomplish that. So if the board would like to do that, I think that would be very acceptable to us.
Because, I mean, the other option I was thinking about was to grant it, but under, if we, and Mr. Pope, I don't know, are we allowed to put conditions upon the release?
I don't think so.
We're not? Okay? Because I was going to say, we could, the conditions could be to maintain the restrictions and to not ever allow a racetrack in those parcels. But if we can't do that...
I don't think we can. I do have a question of Ron. Typically, the public hearings are called for by the board here, which requires the board to meet, call the hearing, and then advertise it. Would it be possible to shorten that process by allowing the staff to call the hearing?
I think if you're going to have a public hearing, I don't know if it's in the bylaws of this board for the board to call it or not. I don't know. I think what we would have to do for the staff to do it would be just to forego the rules and just...
That was a decision that we made, what, Mr. Chairman, three to four years ago concerning ETJ? I remember you made the motion?
Right.
And it was unanimous vote of this board that we would advertise the release of ETJ. That became board policy.
Right.
And that's a rule of this board. We could suspend those rules. The only danger I see in doing that is if the board does not meet and take official action, sounds high and mighty, but forgive me, take official action, it may not have the impact with the public, or it may have greater impact with the public than it would if the staff merely called for a public auction, a public hearing. So, I mean, I would not be opposed to meeting twice, if need be, in regard to this matter. I know that we all got plenty of meetings to go to, but I do understand in tough economic times that we need to make, we need to expedite a thing of this nature as quickly as we can, particularly if it's one that these people would not find particularly egregious. And I don't think they'd have a problem with that. But at the same time, you know, forget the fact that they pulled at my heartstrings, they make a reasonable argument, that someone has to be that buffer between them and someone they can't vote for taking an action that may harm them. That's a valid, that's a moral argument that needs to be contended with. So I would say, if that's the policy, and the South Iredale Development Corporation comes up with a prospect, we would have a call meeting of this board. I would be there. I would vote for the public hearing in 10 days hence, we would hold the public hearing at a time that is convenient for the public. And, you know, my motion cuts, by your estimate, 35 to 50 days off the process?
That would probably be about 30 days, probably.
We cut 30 days off the process, hearing both sides of the argument, that's the best I can do for you.
Excuse me.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Am I to understand with the proposal that Mr. Johnson just made, we've got a 120-day process that we're adding about 10 days to? Is that fair, or is that not right?
If you release the jurisdiction, if you do it as a release of jurisdiction...
Right.
Is your base process 120 days?
Yeah.
Then, bit of my experts, I apologize. Then it would be, that 10 days would essentially be our 10-day advertisement time, plus whatever time it would include to have that first call meeting, to set the call meeting, which is 48 hours, if I'm not mistaken. So another 12...
Or maybe 10%.
10 to 15 days, max.
So 10% of the time.
Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I just, it...
Go ahead. I was just going to say one thing. When we, when we, when the arguments were made about the racetrack before, the reason this board, I think, didn't look favorably upon it is there was no noise ordinance in the county, there was no way to enforce it, there was no way to check if people were too loud, because too loud wasn't defined, and if you do define it, it's with decibels. We can't imagine sheriff's deputy walking around with, you know, noise meters in their cars and stuff. But that doesn't mean, I mean, this property is for industrial use, and a lot of people, the argument that you made was, well, you know, we, you know, it's rural, and we have farms and all that stuff, and we understand that. But the fact of the matter is, is if tomorrow, a company came here and said, "We're coming with 500 jobs, and we're going to make, you know, chocolate-covered widgets," or left-handed widgets, or whatever, on one of these sites, you know, I think our board would say yes. So I don't want to mislead anybody to thinking that we're taking the stand that let us control it, and no industry is going to come into those parcels. That's not the way I take this at all. That land is advertised for industry. We've got 13% unemployment, and even if we had 6% unemployment, that land is advertised for industry to build factories or something, and eventually, that's going to happen. I think most people were concerned about it being a test track, and I agree that it doesn't really belong there. Okay? So with that, I think I could support the motion. But I believe that we do need to give something in writing to the MSI DC that says that our intent is to act in that 10-day window, plus the time it takes to get the stuff in the paper and call the meeting. And hopefully, that will help Mr. Rogerson be able to approach industry or react to industry with that speed that he believes he needs to attract jobs at this difficult time.
Would you like to include that in your motion?
If that's an amendment to my motion, Mr. Robertson, I would accept that amendment.
Okay. Mr. Katie, you have another one?
Mr. Chairman, I just would also like to rise in favor of Mr. Johnson's motion, and to be clear and to concur with Mr. Robertson generally, that I do think that this is an industrial park. I do think that jobs are important. I do think that we need to respond reasonably to people who want to bring industry here, and always take into consideration that we do need jobs. Having said that, I think Mr. Johnson pointed out that the notion that the town of Mooresville should control this decision, when in fact, these people don't live in the town of Mooresville, means that we should retain control unless there's some compelling reason not to retain control. And I'll leave aside the fact that I tend to think personally that this board is more reasoned and more fair, and more thoughtful about the Constitution and what's right than most other boards. So I support the motion.
Heard the motion. All in favor of Mr. Johnson's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 4-0. Now, I'd like to declare a five-minute recess, and then we'll begin with the administrative I have to...
Do I go?
I already did.
Oh.
I just can't stay here for two hours, not...
I'm easy to get.
Tomorrow, I'll be so tired, I can't get in.
Where's he at?
Mr. Mashburn? Are you ready, Mr. Chairman? Yes. Okay. Under Administrative Matters, the first item is a request from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to abandon a portion of SR 3116. Mr. Ron Smith will handle that.
This is an easy one, I hope. This is, the state is, DOT is looking to abandon the last portion of the old Perth Road, the only portion that's on the state maintenance system that's left when Dooley and Perth were aligned. And this doesn't take it off of the books as far as it being a platted road, but it takes us off of their maintenance schedule. There's really no need for it to be on there now, and we see no problem with it. Recommend approval.
Question?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, likewise. Motion carries 4-0. Okay. Mr. David Hartigan is here to present a proposal to you concerning a grant application for Longitude 80 Dairies Project.
Good evening. We have a potential project here in Iredale County, located at Stamey Farm Road and I-40 in the Homer's Truck Stop building. Upon your approval, the county will be applying for a grant to the North Carolina Rural Center for their Building Reuse and Restoration Program. That money will be used to help Longitude 80 Dairies, which is a merging of two families from Stamey Farms and Tony Dairy Industries. Tonight, if you have any questions after this, I want to introduce a couple of people. Bob and Pam Stamey are here, David Stamey, and Francisco Alarcon. And just note that Francisco came all the way from Ecuador for this meeting, and I told him he'd be out of here by 7:20. What the project would like to do would be to renovate the Homer's Truck Stop building and add an additional building. Homer's Truck Stop is approximately 17,700 feet, and they want to add an additional 30,000-foot addition to that building. In that addition, they will be manufacturing yogurt, and in the existing building, there'll be a retail shop, a dairy bar, administrative offices, and restrooms, and that's about it. Training rooms. The project will cost approximately $7 million. It will create a minimum of 25 jobs, and the county will be the applicant, and what it is will turn around to be a $480,000 loan to Longitude 80. And this loan is a forgivable loan if they create the jobs that they have committed to. Are there any questions at all? There are three documents that need to be executed tonight by the chairman. One is a motion approving the project, and approving that the county will be providing at least a 3% cash match to the project. That cash match has been committed to by Longitude 80. I have a letter to that effect. There's also a letter to be signed by the chairman, which pretty much mirrors the resolution. Then there's a three-page application document, which I will say right now, the middle page has a lot of numbers on it, and if you will please forgive me and bear with me, those numbers are going to change before Friday, which is the deadline for submitting the application. But if you will go ahead and execute it, I will run all the changes by Mr. Mashburn before anything goes in. We're still ironing out the details of the costs of the renovations and that sort of thing. That's why the change would be necessary.
I don't understand something here.
Yes, sir.
On the front, on our very front page where we ask the eight questions, number three, it says upfront ongoing cost to the county is $200. Then on this page, on this page four, under Iredale County amount, it says $19,400. to us and if we don't receive it, we don't have any liability to pass on?
We have a letter committing to the $19,000 and I would say that before you actually accept the grant, because this is an application for the grant, correct?
The letter says, it is from the company, says upon receipt, you receiving an award letter from the Rural Center, notify them and they will pay you the $19,400.
So, we will have the money before you finally-
Before you sign any grant agreements or anything.
The award.
We will have no liability until we have money in our pocket. Is that fair?
Correct.
Or there's a simultaneous closing of some sort.
That's correct.
Okay. Can we make that a condition of the approval tonight? Just words to that.
You're actually asking for permission to apply for the grant. At some point, we're going to come back and look at a legal document that we're going to approve. Is that right, Mr. Pope? Would you anticipate that?
Mr. Hartigan, isn't that the way they normally do that? I mean, they will award, they will, this is an application, then we will receive in a notice of an award.
Yes.
And at that time, there are certain documents that will have to be approved at that time.
Yes, you will enter into a contract with Rural Center at that time.
So, tonight, we're not allocating funds, making budget amendments, or entering into contracts.
That's correct.
Mr. Pope will review that.
I will.
Okay.
Motion to- Someone else wants to speak? Pam, I know she had her hand full of paper. Okay.
We're accepting tearful testimony tonight, if you care.
Any other questions?
He's making fun of me now.
No, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartigan, as long as you didn't specify which time zone you were going to be in, am I?
Yeah. Seven o'clock somewhere in the world.
It's almost 7:20 somewhere. Okay, the next item is Susan Blumenstein will bring on Bingham Arbitrage Rebate Services.
And I'll make the motion to approve if you promise not to explain arbitrage again.
Good deal. That's an easy one. We are required by Internal Revenue Service to have arbitrage rebate calculations done for the first five years of every bond issue. The 2008 refunding last year does qualify. Bingham has offered to provide these services for $1,300 for years one and two and no fee for years three through five. They've done all our prior calculations in the past and I request the approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartigan, as long as you didn't specify which time zone you were going to be in, am I?
Yeah. Seven o'clock somewhere in the world.
It's almost 7:20 somewhere. Okay, the next item is Susan Blumenstein will bring on Bingham Arbitrage Rebate Services.
And I'll make the motion to approve if you promise not to explain arbitrage again.
Good deal. That's an easy one. We are required by Internal Revenue Service to have arbitrage rebate calculations done for the first five years of every bond issue. The 2008 refunding last year does qualify. Bingham has offered to provide these services for $1,300 for years one and two and no fee for years three through five. They've done all our prior calculations in the past and I request the approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
And item D, I think it should be noted that today is Ronnie Thompson's first day as the Fire Marshal. And I don't think he ever intended that his first day would be spent quite like this one, but nevertheless, Mr. Ronnie Thompson will be bringing a budget amendment to the Board.
Chairman, before you to bring a request from the Fire Marshal's Office and the Fire Tax Board for a roof repair at the Central Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $11,780, and this money comes out of the Building Improvement Fund.
Stand, roof has failed. All in favor of this motion? Wait, there's not a motion yet.
Aye for that motion. With the understanding that Mr. Thompson's not any better looking at 9:15 in the evening than he is at 6:00 in the morning.
All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Chief Rick Dowdell will bring item E, Budget Amendment.
I do miss our five o'clock gatherings, but that's fine. Glad to hear. First of all, before we get started, I do want to thank the Commissioners, Mr. Mashburn and the Department Heads that called us for our incident last week when we had an officer go down. It's good to know when you're out there all night long and in an incident like that, you folks are behind us and I appreciate that. We do have Budget Amendment Number 11. This is to continue on with the Governor's Highway Safety Program Grant and this is an amendment so we can continue on. Captain Phillips has been the one that's privileged to be presenting this and you are familiar with the information, so I won't tie you up with that.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And Tracy Jackson, Deputy County Manager, will present the next two items.
Mr. Chairman, Memo Number 12 is a request for approval of a memorandum of agreement between the town of Mooresville and Aridale County that will allow firefighters to serve as ambulance drivers.
Okay. Questions? No, is there a motion?
Yes, motion to approve.
Motion's approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, Memo Number 13, it's in your packet. There has been a revision that has been presented by County Attorney Bill Pope and I believe he's going to pass those along to you. You're probably familiar with this issue. It was rooted in Exit Number 33 down in Mooresville, which technically is out in the county. Been a lot of concerns expressed about aggressive panhandling and also the safety of folks at the different intersections in that area. So, we present this to you from the staff tonight, just as a suggestion and for your review and will be glad, of course, to do whatever you would like for us to with this proposed ordinance. And I'll pass that on to Mr. Pope for further explanation.
Mr. Jackson, could I ask you a question? Is this different than what I received in my package on Thursday?
It is.
It is, okay.
But two things, I believe, changed according to Mr. Pope.
Mr. Chairman, while you're looking over that, maybe I can make a couple of comments. I looked at the draft of the ordinance that Mr. Jackson sent and basically thought it was okay. It's almost impossible to draft a status-type ordinance that will not be challenged and will withstand challenge if it's vigorously challenged. I think, however, that this ordinance comes as close to being able to withstand a challenge as any that I've seen or that I've read. I did make two small changes in what had been circulated previously. The first one was I added a definition. There was a reference in the earlier ordinance to shoulder, shoulder of the road, and I defined shoulder of the road. And then I tightened it up in one regard. There was a restriction on panhandling within 20 feet of a bank or a financial institution or ATM machine and I increased that to 100 feet. That's pretty arbitrary on my part, but I thought it was reasonable. I think it's as reasonable as 20 feet and I think it's supportable. And so, I just don't, you know, it didn't strike me as being good policy to allow people to come up to you 20 feet from an ATM machine and solicit it. So, those are the only changes from what you saw.
I'm moved we accept this as information and bring it back up to our next meeting.
Bring it back up or bring it up as an amendment? I mean, as an ordinance?
I just want to read it. Bring it back up to voted in or out or up or down, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we can't vote on it tonight.
I can make a motion, we can table it. Motion to approve, motion to table.
As information, my motion is I bring it up, it's got as information. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries four zero.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, Memo Number 13, it's in your packet. There has been a revision that has been presented by County Attorney Bill Pope and I believe he's going to pass those along to you. You're probably familiar with this issue. It was rooted in Exit Number 33 down in Mooresville, which technically is out in the county. Been a lot of concerns expressed about aggressive panhandling and also the safety of folks at the different intersections in that area. So, we present this to you from the staff tonight, just as a suggestion and for your review and will be glad, of course, to do whatever you would like for us to with this proposed ordinance. And I'll pass that on to Mr. Pope for further explanation.
Mr. Jackson, could I ask you a question? Is this different than what I received in my package on Thursday?
It is.
It is, okay.
But two things, I believe, changed according to Mr. Pope.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, while you're looking over that, maybe I can make a couple of comments. I looked at the draft of the ordinance that Mr. Jackson sent and basically thought it was okay. It's almost impossible to draft a status-type ordinance that will not be challenged and will withstand challenge if it's vigorously challenged. I think, however, that this ordinance comes as close to being able to withstand a challenge as any that I've seen or that I've read. I did make two small changes in what had been circulated previously. The first one was I added a definition. There was a reference in the earlier ordinance to shoulder, shoulder of the road, and I defined shoulder of the road. And then I tightened it up in one regard. There was a restriction on panhandling within 20 feet of a bank or a financial institution or ATM machine and I increased that to 100 feet. That's pretty arbitrary on my part, but I thought it was reasonable. I think it's as reasonable as 20 feet and I think it's supportable. And so, I just don't, you know, it didn't strike me as being good policy to allow people to come up to you 20 feet from an ATM machine and solicit it. So, those are the only changes from what you saw.
I'm moved we accept this as information and bring it back up to our next meeting.
Bring it back up or bring it up as an amendment? I mean, as an ordinance?
I just want to read it. Bring it back up to voted in or out or up or down, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we can't vote on it tonight.
I can make a motion, we can table it. Motion to approve, motion to table.
As information, my motion is I bring it up, it's got as information. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
This doesn't count as the, don't you have to have, what, one or two readings?
Have to have two readings, but it's not unanimous on the first reading.
Okay, so it could be passed the next time we meet.
It could be.
Yes, okay.
I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. You had a motion to bring it up and then Mr. Cato had a motion to table.
Well, no, that's my apology. I was suggesting that maybe we should move to pass it and then move to table it, but I think the chairman's motion preceded mine and mine wasn't valid.
Just vote on it next time.
We just received this as information, we'll vote, we'll bring it up on the agenda at our next meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Parliamentarian, I don't understand, at the next meeting, we can vote on this twice or that we can only vote on it once and then have two more weeks before we can finalize it? Is that correct?
If it's passed unanimously at the next meeting, it will be adopted.
Okay.
Okay, the Memo Number 14, the next item, is in response to some concerns that have been expressed in the past about resolutions and proclamations that appear on the agenda without prior board member review or sponsorship. So, what this does, this basically does establish a procedure for resolutions to be presented to the Board, resolutions and proclamations to be presented to the Board for consideration. When we speak of resolutions here, we basically are talking about what, you know, in legislation, I guess, would be a simple resolution. In other words, something that's non-regulatory, does not create law or does not direct an action. It's usually to commemorate an event or draw attention to an event or something of that nature. And so, what this does is just basically lay out a procedure for that to occur and for those resolutions or proclamations to appear on the agenda of the County Commissioners.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And the last item is the approval of the minutes for August the 18th, 2009.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business. Hearing none, new business. None new business, County Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I want to bring to your attention tonight, and I'm passing around a memorandum that talks about a budget review and update. In order to closely assess the impact the economy is having on the current year and updating projections on current and future year's budget, I'm recommending that the Board consider a half-day budget review and planning session sometime in late October or early November. And I've just listed some possible dates down there that I think would fall in line with us being able to get the information to you that would be meaningful at this meeting. I'm not asking for you to do anything with this tonight, but it is my intent to hopefully on the September 15th agenda to finalize the date and time for this kind of first-quarter review. With the economy not improving any more than it has so far, we don't want to wait too long before we really take a close look at where we are as far as our expenditures for the first quarter, as far as our revenue, and where there may be projections or changes to that. And there may be other issues that you would like to talk about, that you would need more time to talk about than we can do at a regular meeting, but that's the intent. And this has been practice that we've had for the last couple of years anyway to kind of have quarterly or at least kind of mid-year reviews.
I'll make a motion, we now go into closed session for action on GS 143, 31811A4, Economic Development Property Acquisition is 318, 143, 318A-5. I may have that wrong. Legal action, GS 143, 31811A3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The open session, all in favor say aye.
Aye.